Happy Wednesday, everyone. Welcome to another fabulous edition of the Greater Lawrence Chamber of Commerce Chamber Chat. My name is Brad Klaufenstein, President of the Greater Lawrence Chamber. Today, our special guest is from the Indianapolis City County Council, District Five, which, stick with me on this, imagine it vaguely runs east of Post Road to the county line and from Forty Second, Forty Sixth on the south end, all the way up to the Hamilton County line, including the reservoir. We have with us Counselor Ally Brown. Counselor Brown, welcome to the Greater Lawrence Chamber Chamber Chat.
Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, I have fun. So I got, you know, I follow the city of Lawrence border, so Forty Sixth dips down to Forty Second, and then Post Road, I don't have Monarch, and then I kind of cut up to Fall Creek and cut over, so.
Yes.
It's pretty exciting, you know.
You have a swanky district.
I have a very diverse district, you know, and I often say this, the issues that are faced at Forty Fourth and Post are a lot different than the issues that are faced up in Geis, so. But I have, I have a, I love my district. I have a wonderful district full of pretty amazing people, a lot of planned communities, a lot of community pride. I love being part of the city of Lawrence, having two mayors myself, and having my own city counselor that I can complain to. So that's exciting. So yeah, I get to complain to other counselors, you know. Maria Rismoroff is my local counselor, so that's, that's nice for Lawrence. So yeah, it's, it's an interesting district, definitely north to south, a lot of difference, but just overall, pretty amazing people.
So you've been a counselor now for ten and a half months, correct?
Yes.
So what, tell us about your experience, what you've learned, what you've done, what you're excited about. I mean, it's still kind of new to you.
Well, in my first hundred days, you know, I never would have thought the pandemic would hit, you know. I can remember the first Saturday, so right, the world shut down on March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth. That's the last day schools were in session and everything started to shut down. And we started scrambling as a council on how to handle a bunch of stuff, working with federal grants. There were things that I never, ever want to do again, clear money for freezer trucks or refrigerated trucks for, for people. You know, stuff like that, but it has been a trial by fire. It has, I think, allowed me to put what is super important to the forefront, and to me, that's all about building up our community, making sure that, you know, D five, greater, the greater Lawrence area, Lawrence Township. I sit fully in Lawrence Township, I'm one of the very few that has one township. You know, really be focusing on the people, which has been an honor to get to, to do that work and work with the community. As things are shifting now, got through my first budget session. Never in my life did I think I would spend 1.2 billion dollars in an evening, but I did it, along with the twenty-four other counselors when we passed that, that was, that, that's, that's an unconceivable amount of money for me. So it's pretty amazing. You know, now, now I'm able to turn and focus and say, okay, this is our world. It's our world for the foreseeable future until we get a vaccine or whatever. So how can we do the most and the best good in this world? So I'm actually focusing a lot on how we as a community. So just so, I know some of you I've met, some of you have actually also met my son. I have a three and a half, almost four-year-old named Dylan, who is the love of my life. He's the best guy on the whole planet. He's on the autism spectrum. So I have turned a lot of my focus to there are two percent of the people, two percent of people in the United States are on the autism spectrum. It's one out of every forty-six children is diagnosed now. So how can we do better to help people on the spectrum? So that's something I focused on, and that brings that everything from advocating for mass transit and training our mass, training our transit drivers on how to communicate with people who are nonverbal, to focusing on how do we work with businesses in HR to learn how to talk to people on the spectrum and how people may not be the best interviewers, but how we can, interviewees, but we can bring in some amazing, amazing people on the spectrum. So December seventh, we're going to be announcing a really big initiative for the city of Indianapolis that'll be all encompassing. But it's really, how can I do the most good? And when I, when I look at my son and part of it selfish, it's how can I make the world better for him and, and for everyone like him? So really expanding that out has, has been something I've kind of turned my focus to because with my district being inside the city of Lawrence, eighty-five percent of my district is inside of the city of Lawrence. I, I don't have a lot of the normal counselor details, right? Like, as much as I would love to be the fast track for the pothole filling, that's not me. You know, I, I do, I, if somebody calls me, I report it to the city of Lawrence, you know. Potholes, that, that infrastructure, my job is to fight to bring the money from the county to Lawrence. But it allows me to focus on some bigger picture things and do my best to serve my community.
So I have still yet to figure out how Lawrence gets funded and how that works in conjunction with Indianapolis. That might be for another day.
For somebody who murdered me with a lot of PowerPoints, it is a interesting, the excluded cities are a very interesting phenomena. I actually talked to somebody from Jacksonville, Florida the other day, and it was a very strange space for me. And I said, you know, we're in Unigov, and she freaked out. She goes, we're a Unigov too, so when you find somebody else who, who bonds with you on that. But yeah, so my job on the council is to make sure that Lawrence is getting its fair share in the tax dollars that's accumulated by the county. So like county treasurer and assessor, they're looking at money that's coming in and making sure that Lawrence gets our fair share, along with advocating, we have to do extra work. It's, it's very confusing, but basically any road that runs through is the city of Indianapolis road that's maintained by the city of Lawrence. So all number roads kind of work that way. Then there's county line roads and all this kind of stuff. So there's money for those that I have to advocate for Indianapolis that actually goes to the city of Lawrence, and then the city of Lawrence spends out. The only thing Indianapolis really does inside the city of Lawrence, because we have crew on, already hired as bridges. So a lot of times the Indianapolis crew will come in and do a bridge in Lawrence in their partnership, but otherwise everything else is kind of handled by Lawrence. So it's, it's interesting. Yeah, you start going through intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreements or start looking at funding streams. It is, I can remember the first day I was like, can I have all of that? And they were like, oh, Ally, we're talking fifty years. So I've been going through everything because I just want to make sure that we're getting our fair share out here.
Cool, well, thank you for doing that. So let's do a little bio on you. Tell us, let's start with a little Ally Brown. Where did you come from and how did you get here?
Well, I am not from Indianapolis. I'm Indianapolis by choice. I'm from northwest Indiana originally. I grew up in Portage. I am a region rat, you know, that's kind of my personality in general too. I, I talk a little fast and I'm a little aggressive, but I have, I've slowed that down. I went Ball State, I graduated from Portage High School and went to Ball State, degrees in public relations, political science, and campaign communications management. I always wanted to work in politics because I believe that you get really good people elected, good things can happen. So I started in that track and, and working on elections and working on campaigns and kind of found an itch. I like to talk to people. I really like to connect with people. So I started working on issue campaigns. I was the first person hired by Freedom Indiana, which was the campaign that stopped the amendment that would have banned same-sex marriage in Indiana. I worked on women's issues, women in politics, recruiting women. And I did that for a while, and then I kind of fell into construction. I have worked construction adjacent for the past six years. I know enough to talk about construction and sound like I know what I'm doing, but I have no idea. For, for three years, I ran the Indiana Construction Roundtable and was the founding executive director of the Indiana Construction Roundtable Foundation with the goal of I did that for a while, had my kiddo, that was an awesome job, but it was about eighty hours a week, and I, I had to make some choices. I currently serve as the executive director of Rebuilding Together. What Rebuilding Together does is we work with the union construction industry to help people, senior citizens, people with disabilities, people in super, in poverty issues, really trying to help them stay in their homes. So we do, we do work rebuild. If you remember Christmas in April, so Christmas in April was a thing in the nineties, it actually evolved into Rebuilding Together. So we work with neighborhoods to revitalize homes, to keep senior citizens in their homes, because we know when people age in place, they live longer, stronger, better lives. So that's what my day job is. It's really fun. I hang out with construction people and I get to help seniors and people with disabilities stay in their homes. So it's super fulfilling. So roundabout way, I ended up down here in 2012 because I met a guy. And he's been pretty great. We got married. We're going to be celebrating five years next Monday, November sixteenth, which if you know a lot of people who work in campaigns or, or in elections, we have a lot of November anniversaries because it's after Election Day. You know, we moved, it was never something I wanted to pursue, being in office, until there was an opportunity and I, I really saw the need to have more, have younger people, to have more moms in office, to have people who are really advocating to, to grow Indianapolis for families. It's great that we grow jobs here, but we also want to keep people in the county. And Lawrence is, frankly, it's the best place to live. You're going to be able to find affordable housing. You know, the only thing we're missing right now is that mass transit, and I'm working really hard on that to make sure that we have that purple line coming through, and then hopefully working with the city of Lawrence to get a Lawrence local to run through the city.
Cool. So, so since you've been on the job as a city county counselor, and just thinking about all of Marion County and Indianapolis, what are the biggest challenges that you found and what's the biggest surprise?
Oh, boy. Well, the biggest challenge is learning what we can and can't do as a city. With Unigov, we have less control over a lot of things, since the majority of our control are, I know this is all confusing, but if y'all remember when we lost the four at-large seats, went from twenty-nine, twenty-five, that's a state issue. The state has a lot of control over the county and over Indianapolis. So we don't have a lot of local control and stuff, so that's kind of a challenge. So you start to try to do something, and then our, our counselor says, no, you can't do that because we don't have control that way. So that's been kind of one of the challenges. We really are, and in simplest form, the council is the fiscal body, right? Our whole goal is to approve the budget and to, to watch the budget. But we have this great power of convening where we can bring people together and hear people. And so that's been one of the greatest rewarding things is that being able to find these voices that need to be heard. One thing that I do constantly, and I, Lawrence is unique even among the excluded cities. We are, we are fiercely independent. We have our own fire department, we have our own police department. You know, and it, and it's advocating that as Indianapolis grows, that Lawrence gets its, gets its spoils and making sure that we're growing together. So though it is a challenge, that's one of the greatest rewards. You know, some of the coolest things you get to do as a counselor are really just, you know, getting to visit someplace that this council directed money to, and you're seeing the impact. Talking to people who have dealt with flooding or other issues or something for their whole life and the way water happens, that that's, you know, that's something the council did. We trade, we made the money move there so those people don't have to worry about it. That to me is, is, is super rewarding.
So let's open it up to others that are here that might have questions for Counselor Brown. Do we have questions from the audience? If not, I will continue to ask questions. So.
It's okay.
So anyhow, so when you and your husband, is he from Indianapolis?
So he's, he has lived in Indianapolis for the majority of his adult life. He's actually a military brat.
Okay.
Air Force, so he attended everywhere, he even attended high school in Belgium. So, but yeah, he's originally from Indiana also.
Okay. So was Lawrence a spot you sought out? Or did it just kind of work out that you landed in Lawrence and then you're like, oh, this is a cool little place?
Well, we had dabbled in Lawrence politics, I guess, in, in 2014 and 2015 and working out here for different candidates. And I really just, I couldn't believe Lawrence was inside of Indy. You know, you, and how amazing it was. So when we decided, you know, we're looking for more permanent place to live or ready to no longer be in an apartment or, you know, stuff like that, Lawrence was where we wanted to go. It was, it was a no-brainer. It's affordable, we can have a house with a yard for our dogs and the schools here. Having a three-and-a-half-year-old, I apologize, my phone's going off. Having a three-and-a-half-year-old with, with autism, I gotta tell you, the Lawrence school system has bent over backwards in ways that I can't even explain to make sure that he is getting the best education possible. They opened their arms really wide the second he walked in the door and have created something like that. So, you know, I advocate for everyone out to move out to Lawrence because I think it's the best. Love it out here. I'm excited that he's in all these schools. It's just great out here. Once we, once we decided we were ready to no longer apartment hop, Lawrence is where we're ready to go.
So let me dive into more difficult issues. Think back to mid-May and beyond. Obviously, we had some, some civil unrest downtown that, and I want to say we had protesters and we had rioters, and those were not the same people. And so we've had some challenges, and then obviously with the announcement yesterday, see, things seem to be a little bit more calm. What is just your overall opinion on how things happened? And what do you think as a city we've learned and what have you learned through this process?
You know, it's, there's a lot that, you know, and I, I can see everybody on here. There's a lot that we're never going to understand based on the color of our skin, right? There's, there is, there is a life, just as being a woman, I'm never going to understand what it's like to be a man in this world. I'm never going to understand what it's like to be a person of color. I do, however, understand that there's a lot of trauma in that space, and it is historical and it weighs on people. Everything happening on May, May sixth was the date that Dreshawn Reed was shot. You know, it was, it was a light on, on, on a powder cake. There's a lot of hurt in this community. When you start working, as I do, I work in housing, right? The neighborhood that we're working on right now is near northwest, which if you're familiar with where Citizens is or Martin Luther King Center or Cleo's Bodega, that area, you look at that area and those homes that were built in the eighteen hundreds. That area was, was doing amazingly well, and it was a good place for people to live, and it was generational housing. And then we as a city decided to drive sixty-five and seventy right through their neighborhood. We decided to do that. We took down the property values, we took down opportunities, we displaced people from communities that were growing. We have to acknowledge as a city what we have done to people of color. Now, I was down there on the Saturday, the protests that weekend in May. I brought my counselors with me. There were, I brought Republican counselors with me. The goal for us was to make sure that we were there and we want to make sure people knew that they were hurt. And, and there's a lot of hurt, so we were there to hear it. Now, there's a lot that has happened downtown that keeps getting attributed to, to riots or to things like that, that really, if, if you want to walk downtown and you say it's a ghost town or you say things are still boarded up, it's, Salesforce hasn't brought back any of their staff, we're not having any of these conventions. All these things aren't happening, and all of this plus what happened in May and what continues, you know, it's just snowing, snowballing and harming, you know, the image of downtown. Now, I don't agree with property damage or theft or anything like that, but I also understand that somebody who's lost, somebody very close to me, that things are just things and people are people. So I can't begin to experience the hurt, but I can't excuse what was hap, what happened either. I'm very proud of Prosecutor Mears and sending that and very happy with what he did. And Mayor Hogs said, advocating to instantly send it to a special prosecutor to eliminate that, that appearance that is putting it on the scale. You know, yesterday, watching the state police, you know, lay out everything that happened from their perspective, from what they showed, you know, it's, it's hard to watch and it's hard to see. What I saw was a young man having a crisis that had a weapon that shouldn't have had it, that shouldn't have run for the police, who made a very bad choice. And I've made some very bad choices in my life. I'm sure we all have, right? That's how you become an adult, you make bad choices and you learn from it. But, you know, none of my bad choices stopped me from being here. So there's a lot of pain there, and it, and it's not, and, and to not use this expression in gesture, it's not a black or white issue, there's a lot of gray in there. The officer acted in, in, within what he was supposed to do, right? But where did we as a society fail, Dreshawn Reed? Was he not getting mental health? You know, we know he was in the military and was dismissed. Why was he dismissed? Was it a mental health issue? Why did he have a gun? Should he have, you know, why was he, why, you know, as, as a mom of somebody who's on the spectrum, who behaves in ways that aren't typical, right? Like, that's where my heart goes, is, is where did we as a society fail him, fail his family? So, you know, without leveling any, any kind of judgment, because that's not my job. My job is just to care about the community and do the best. That's kind of a lot to unpack, right? But, you know, from what I, when I was downtown, the people who were doing the things, the, the breaking the windows, they weren't the people who were leading the protest, they weren't the people out there with signs. There are people who came to cause problems and use this situation to do it. So we as a city, as a whole, just need to do better. And I think some of that just starts with having more open and honest conversations. One thing that I truly believe in is radical transparency. As, you know, people with this general orders committee that we passed, which adds, basically it adds some civilian oversight, these aren't just random civilians that are going to be on there. These are, these are people who, who are lawyers or who are trained. We just want more transparency. My family is full of police officers. My cousin, she was a Virginia Beach police officer when that guy walked into the, into their city hall and started shooting people. When people get angry at police, my family is constantly at, at risk. And even talking with them, to me, it's if people understood better why things are happening in policing or, or where police, policemen were coming from, or if the police better understood the community that they were in, there were, it's a lack of communication and a lack of understanding. So using that and talking about responsibility and transparency to me is really important because of that.
So just looking at, Russ, do you have a question?
Yeah, I want to jump in there on the police relationships and all that. And Ally, by way of, we've only met each other a couple of times. And actually, I guess I got a text from Krista, so I have to let her know that I was on with you. But anyway, the, my, my background in media includes seventeen years in management at W T L C from late seventies to mid-nineties, and, and then four more years in the late two thousand time as the general manager for the Hispanic stations here. And so I, you know, worked in two major minority communities, which are, and a whole lot of white guys out there that can say that, you know, particularly with the length of time. So I, you know, when I saw all this unraveling here, I've got dear friends from my days, particularly at W T L C, that I can talk to and get information and, you know, find out different things. And it's something I've always known. Amos Brown and I were very dear friends, and we worked together for sixteen years. And there was this element, you know, that, that will never fully trust the police department within the black community. You know, it's part of the reason you see, you know, a lot of the things, you know, they don't get a lot of information when there's, when there's a shooting. People don't want to go to the police, they just want to take matters into their own hands because that trust element is not there. Now, you hit on something really good, is the communication level that has to get better, but how do you do that?
Yeah, that's something, so just to, to get into more space that I can feel comfortable talking from as a mom of somebody on the spectrum. So I put it out to, there's a, there's a community group for parents of special needs kids. And I said, I'm, I'm trying to work to make the city better for our kids. What is your biggest fear or what, what can we do better as a city? And out of those, out of the eighty-five responses I got, seventy-five of them were afraid of their child's interaction with the police. So when I sat down with the chief and started, started talking with Chief Taylor about, you know, this is my fear. You know, my son is an eloper, he, he runs away. It's, it's common with somebody on the spectrum, right? But if he's an eloper at three and a half, it's one thing. If he's an eloper at sixteen, it's another. Those of you who have met me, you've seen my stature, I'm six foot three, he's going to be a big dude, right? What happens if he's in a situation where we've all done something as teenagers that we really were glad that the police didn't show up? But what if he does something and the police show up and all of a sudden the lights and sirens are on? And, and they're playing and they're, you know, stop what you're doing. And then there's, there's something called echolalia in, with people with autism where they respond what they, they repeat. So he will, what are you doing? Back to the police officer. You know, all of a sudden, he's escalated an issue without even realizing that he has, right? So it's talking about, and it, and it's working with the police officer. So we're, the city of Indianapolis, and I'm, I'm meeting with Chief Hoffman too, for the city of Lawrence, are going to get certified of working, we're, have committed to getting every officer certified and getting the police department accredited to working with people with neurodiverse issues. So like, that's something that I can do as a counselor to really bring, let's talk about these issues. Let's bring these people together. Let's give the officers their education, let's certify them, let's give them the tools, you know? That's not something, you know, and there's so many people with, there's so many people with, you know, autism or with other issues that it seems people are a little bit easier to understand or to change their ways. So maybe using these kids with autism, we can talk about how having, just giving more grace, right? That's something I always, I always try to do is I don't know what somebody else is going through at the moment that we interact. I don't know what they've been going through with all day, right? I don't know a police officer's backstory when they pull me over. I don't know the, what happened to the grocery store clerk before she started ringing up my groceries, right? So you always have to approach people with some grace because you don't know if they're having the worst day of their life. So I think just working on that with the officers, and I think being honest, we have to be honest about racial issues and we have to be honest about racial divides. And that's not something that's just on, on, on people of color to teach us. That's not something just on white people to learn. It's something that we have to work together as a community. We are beautifully diverse community. I think my district itself is like thirty-eight percent people of color. It is a wonderful, beautiful place to live, full of awesome, amazing people. I, I tell people, Lawrence is what happens when you grow a community where communities allowed to grow, middle-class communities allowed to grow without the effects of redlining. You get these beautifully diverse communities where neighbors just live next to each other, and, and that's so important, but that came because we changed the way the rules were written. And so we have to look at the ways the rules are written. We have to look at the way we approach things as professionals in our jobs. You know, mortgage lenders had to change the way they looked at giving mortgages to be able to do this. So we have to ask police officers to give grace, and we have to ask people to give grace to the officers. Because you don't know that that officer could have been responding to you at a traffic ticket and right before they were dealing with a child abuse situation. So yeah, they may be a little extra grumpy, they may have gone through something, but you don't know what they went through. And also, if, you know, I'm pulled over and I'm angry, that officer doesn't know that I'm angry because, you know, I just lost my job or I just, you know, so we have to talk about that. And so, and I know that sounds really squishy, right? That sounds really, really soft, but it's the only through that kind of leading with the kindness and grace and giving that, that we can really, I think, you know, I'm not here to heal divides, I'm not, I'm, I'm a partisan. I elected as a Democrat, right? That's the thing. But when we talk about, like, when I talk to people, I don't know if they're a Democrat or a Republican, just like I don't know what they did this morning. So I approach, approach everybody with that, and I think that's just something, when we work together with police, when we start talking about this, when we're talking to communities, we open those lines of communication, we can really truly communicate with that grace and that kindness that we need to lead with.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. That's like somebody was about to get eaten by a dog.
Yeah, that was Rosie, my office manager here. She, I'll, I'll never have a problem in this house. So if she sees a delivery person coming or something during the day, she'll, she lets me know. Wonderful rescue, great pernicious rescue that we took in, in April during the pandemic. And darn glad I did, you know, it's just my wife and I being empty nester. So just, hey, little sidebar for you, Ally, here, you know, I, you know, Chris is going to ask me about your hair color for today. So I'm going to say, I guess I'm seeing your normal.
It's just, it's been, it's been a bit, so like, so.
Oh, okay, there we go. I love it, I love it.
I have roots, this is the problem when you have an unnatural hair color, is those roots really show. It makes me happy.
The rest of the people on this call, the first time I saw one of the council meetings after the pandemic, and it was done as a Zoom, there, there was Krista with her pink hair, so it's like, it had hair comparison, you know? So, it's like, it had hair comparison, you know? I love it. I love it too. It's absolutely, it just shows a fun side that both you guys have. So, hey, another quick, quick question pertaining to budget. And that deals with sidewalks. And I know that those things have to, if there's a specific sidewalk or something like that, it almost has to be specifically put in the budget. Is that, am I, am I correct with that and how does it happen?
Yeah, so there's two different ways. One in, and this is for Indy, not for Lawrence, so that's.
Right, right.
We can, if a street's being redone or something like that, we can do something called the Complete Streets Initiative, which gives us the bike lanes, the curbs and the sidewalk.
Right.
Now, so that one's kind of the easier one. You just add it to the budget of redoing a street. When we're doing sidewalks, so I can tell you, there is a trail and the name is escaping me that comes out of Fort Harrison and it's going to connect to a trail that runs through Geist and up through Hamilton County. There's like three hundred feet of sidewalk that I needed to get up there in Geist to complete this. So, they can, the trails can connect. That took me a lot of work because you're, even though it's a public right-of-way, you have to talk about, you know, what's running underneath. Just dealing with the Geist area in general because Geist isn't man-made. It has created so many issues with under, under the city water. No, what are they called? Sinkholes, all this kind of stuff. So, just getting sidewalk up there is difficult. And Adam's on here, Adam Hoffner's on here, and he's my favorite person to talk to sidewalks about. So, one of the things that we've been talking about is how we're, what we're doing material-wise for sidewalks. Now, the traditional hard cement, you know, three feet and then there's a gap and three feet. Those sidewalks are incredibly expensive. But we can do more trail walks, which we can actually widen. So, two people in wheelchairs could pass by each other. Somebody pushing a stroller could pass by. They require less deep groundwork. They're just easier to get in general over great distances. The price is pretty amazing, the difference. So, it's really just advocating, it's finding out with the sidewalk, what the water structure is, what the utility structure is buried under the road, what the future plans are. I tried to get a sidewalk on one road and they told me, Ally, that's in plans for twenty-twenty-two to get torn up. So, we're not going to put a sidewalk there and then tear it up and then put it in. So, I'm now working for the Complete Streets Initiative for that. Complete Streets is the, is the name of the initiative. And that gives the curbs, the bike lane and the, bike lane when applicable and the sidewalk. So, we're working on that. It's, it's interesting. So, like, but dealing with Lawrence, my job is to advocate for things. And like, I would really like some sidewalk on Fifty-second Street between the two second sections of the Koran's trailer right there. Because right now, it's a two-lane road. There is a almost immediate gas drop-off. There are very few lights. And I often, when driving, because I live in Whining Ridge, so coming up Pendleton Pike and get off at Fifty-second to come through and in the dark, I often see people walking on the side of the road or walking in the grass. There's just no, they walk to the gas station to get something to eat. They walk anywhere and it's, and it's really scary. So, that's an Indianapolis road inside the city of Lawrence, but all the land there is private property owned by the Korans. So, you're talking about different layers. So, it takes quite a while. It's really easy if something's already planned to put the sidewalk in or if, you know, we're redeveloping things to put sidewalks in. But it's something I'm always going to advocate for because I love living in Whining Ridge, but I can't ride my bike to Kroger, which is right there because there's no sidewalk or safe way to get there. And right there with Sunny Side Meets German Church and those creeks there, it's super scary, so.
I can't, I can't ride my bike to Eagle Creek from where I am. And there's about a stretch there on Fifty-sixth Street. You know, I wouldn't want to walk it or run it or anything. The other side of Georgetown, there are sidewalks there. But area over here by Broadmoor and Flannery Buchanan, no. And likewise, going all the way across into your district, you know, there's only a few places that actually have the sidewalks. You know, and that's a, that's a major thoroughfare. I know on this side of town, within the last couple of years, there's been three fatalities, four fatalities on Castor Bicycle, two pedestrians and motorists, you know, all. Go ahead.
One thing I'm really looking forward to, with the purple line coming through here in Lawrence, to coming up Post Road, going, you know, thirty-eighth to Post and then going up to Ivy Tech. Post Road is a drag strip. People drive so fast. It is so scary. And about two months ago, two little boys were hit and one lost his life just trying to cross seven-thirty, just trying to cross the road. Bringing that BRT system, though it can be annoying for drivers, right? Because you have to slow down or you have to make a U-turn instead of just turning into something. It's going to make it so much safer for pedestrians on that street. It's going to make it so much safer for people to cross, for the kids. I mean, like, that is just, like, it, it saddens me. So, when we start talking about infrastructure, we have to talk about infrastructure from a speed perspective, from what it does for businesses, but also for how it affects pedestrians, how, how it's safe. So, that's a lot of my focus is really just trying to upgrade our, our, our infrastructure. Because Lawrence has grown so exponentially out here that it hasn't really, some of the infrastructure just hasn't caught up between the two. There, one thing I really would like is to get a pedestrian bridge over Pendleton Pike. Because anybody who's gone down Pendleton Pike, you will see people pushing strollers, carrying grocery bags, trying to cross five to six to eight lanes of traffic at different points. Getting that pedestrian bridge is, is something that I really, really want. But you're talking, that's Highway sixty-seven. That's a state road. You've got Lawrence issues. You've got Indianapolis issues. You've got state issues. Some parts of it are protected because of VNR, because there's a creek that runs really close. So, you start talking about the different layers, but it's something that I'm going to keep fighting through because that, I mean, it scares me just to see them walking and I can't even imagine that you have to cross the road to get groceries and you're risking your life just to do that, so.
Unfortunately, you did it right. Takes a fatality, sometimes to get that changed. You know, a good example that I, that I saw on this side of town, Georgetown Road from like Fifty-sixth up past Seventy-first Street, tons of apartments there and no, there were no sidewalks and people would walk into the Kroger on Seventy-first and Mission Road to get their groceries with their little carts and what have you. Took a couple of very bad accidents and, you know, Mayor Ballard was in play at the time. He wasn't aware of what had happened. Once he did, by golly, it jumped to the front of the list and it got done. So, and, and the fatalities were the driving factor that happened, which means you've got some hope for Post like we might have for Kessler here.
Yeah.
So, now, Councilor Brown, you've been very generous with your time. So, as we wind this down, I'm going to give you the last question that I typically give our guests. You and your family are going out for dinner in Lawrence. Where are you going?
Oh, man. Feiya Thai is absolutely one of my favorite places. But with the kiddo, it's definitely going to be Jaco's. He will eat an entire medium pizza himself. He eats three hours old and skin and bones and will eat that pizza. We take him to Feiya Thai, we'll eat all my spicy stuff, so I'd rather, yeah. That's a hard, oh, God, so much good food, so much good food. I eat well, so, yeah.
Eat an entire medium pizza, three-and-a-half by himself. Six foot three is going to be short. He's going to be.
Terrified, terrified.
So, Councilor Brown, thank you very much for joining us today. It has been a pleasure. It's been very nice getting to know you better. Thank you for representing the city of Lawrence in our interests. So, we appreciate you being here and look forward to seeing you at future Chamber events. Speaking of which, we have our Women in Leadership Forum, November seventeenth. So, that is coming up. If you have not registered yet, everyone, please get registered. Tonight, we are having our first Goodie Bag Drop. So, everybody who registers gets a goodie bag. We assembled those yesterday. Tonight's Goodie Bag Drop is going to be at Titan Brewery from four-thirty to six o'clock tonight. So, people are welcome to come and get that. Let's see, other events we have, we just, in the last twenty-four hours, scheduled our next Business Matters luncheon. That's going to be on December tenth at Georgia's Neighborhood Grill. And our speaker is going to be Danny O'Malley from O'Malley's Supermarkets. Ally, that might be pre-you coming to town, but.
I, I, I remember O'Malley's a mess. I'm not here by anywhere else.
Hey, Brad, I got to put in a plug for Danny's radio show, Indy's Trusted Servant, that airs on ninety-one nine W-I-T-T. It's a double plug. He's on four-thirty every Wednesday. I, I happen to be the substitute host today for the show. And we're featuring Second Helpings and talking about the great work they do. But Danny's on every Wednesday at four-thirty and you'll hear all kinds of stuff. Brad, you've been on that before, haven't you, with him?
I have not, not yet.
Consider yourself invited, okay?
I'm sure that's going to come since I invited him to speak to us.
Oh, it just has because I'm his executive, executive producer, so you just got invited.
Fantastic. Thanks, Russ.
Ally, you can't be far behind either, you know? So, maybe, maybe this will, I've got, we've had Krista on already. So, Ally, you're the next one on the city county council list, okay?
Sounds good.
And as Councilor Brown put in the comments in the chat, ally.brown@indy.gov is her email address for anybody who needs to get ahold of her. So, otherwise, that'll do it this week. We will be back again next Wednesday. I don't have our Wednesday guest scheduled yet. I do have Chris Jeter coming on on December third, so we'll get to meet him. So, thank you all for attending. Councilor Brown, thank you very much for being here with us. And I look forward to seeing everyone again soon. Take care.
Bye, everybody.